Ready to go? Hello, today is April 25, 2025, and I will call to order the Madison Common Council Executive Committee meeting. I mean, did I say when? February 25th? I don't know. Close enough. It's, yeah, February 25th, 2025. I even looked. Thank you. Okay, so with that said, Karen, could you please call?
Yes. President Figaro Cole.
Here.
Vice President Duncan.
Yeah.
Alder Govendera, Alder Conklin is excused. Alder Martinez Rutherford. Alder Uguere.
Here.
Alder Harrington McKinney.
Present.
Alder Curry. You have quorum.
Thank you. So with that, I would like motion for the approval. No, sorry, no, not that. Hold on. Yeah, so the approval of the minutes of, what day was that? 2/11. Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Are there any questions or any changes that we need to tackle for the minutes from February 11th? I don't see anybody on the queue, so is there any objection recording a unanimous vote for approval? Okay, with that, that motion passes. Karen, do we have any public comment?
We do not have any registrants.
Thank you. So with that, we move on straight into disclosures and recusals. Members of the body should make any required disclosures or recusals under the City Ethics Code. Are there any, any to be announced? I don't see any hands up, so we move on, straight into item two, Legislaw Number 86994, amending various sections of the Madison General Ordinance to correct inconsistencies and improper references in the Madison General Ordinance constituent a 2025 City Attorney Revisors Ordinance. Can I have?
Motion approved.
A second. Okay. Attorney Haas, do you want to give us a summary of what this is about?
Sure, thank you. As we recall, we bring a revisers ordinance to you every once in a while just to correct errors, technical errors, grammatical errors, things that we've caught looking through the ordinances. We just kind of try to keep a running list and then bring a batch to you every few months. And so this is our newest version. There really isn't a lot of substance to review unless people have questions. The, I guess, the most interesting or meaty one is the second one, which was, we found that there was an error when a previous ordinance was adopted. There's some language that struck, some language that should not have been struck, and so that's in Section 2 of this ordinance affecting Section 12.045. This allows traffic engineering to, it clarifies the rules for traffic engineering to post emergency regulations for traffic. So otherwise, I don't, I don't think it's especially worthwhile to go through every section unless people have questions. As I said, mostly they're grammatical or to kind of fix technical errors.
Thank you, Attorney Haas. Are there any questions for Attorney Haas? I don't see any hands. Is there any discussion? Is there an objection recorded unanimous vote in approval of these ordinance changes? I don't see an objection, so we move on to the next item. Next item on the list is 86606, a substitute for amending Section 3.70 of the Madison General Ordinances related to public records to align with current technology, city practices, and state law. A motion, please?
Motion to approve substitute.
Second?
Second.
We take MGR, because he went first. For this particular item, Attorney Haas, can you also please give a summary of the changes that the substitute has or came with, please?
One second, please. Sure, so this ordinance, again, is meant to really sort of update the ordinances to be consistent with our current practices related to how we respond to public records. And how we respond to those records requests is governed by state law, but then we have a separate ordinance to kind of flesh out some of the specific procedures. And so, and so our office has been working with IT, again, just to kind of keep track of some things that have to be updated. The original version of this ordinance was really the substantive part, which was an effort to implement a new provision of state law that would allow the cities to charge for audio and video records of the police department. And that was in the original ordinance. That provision has been taken out in the substitute, so what you have left, again, is, I view as kind of technical updates. And I can pull the ordinance up here, but also Dr. Edgerton is here, and maybe if you have questions about the specifics, she can chime in as well.
Are there any questions from the body? Aldo Hilli? You need to unmute yourself, Aldo Hilli.
All right. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you now, thank you.
So my question is, we are removing the video. If you can, if Attorney Haas can repeat his last statement of that, what kind of information are allowed to share? Because I think what I heard is just like the video is not allowed to be shared from the police. Is that what I heard?
No, I'm sorry, I left out one piece about what was removed. What was removed would have allowed us to charge for the time it took to redact information from audio and video records that were released. So previously, we were not able to charge for that staff time. The new state statute would allow us to, and the original version of this ordinance would have implemented that, given staff authority to keep track of that time and to charge for it. That has been taken out, so the substitute does not include that provision. It doesn't really affect, you know, what is released. We're still under the same rules as far as what is a public record, and a public record could include audio recordings or video recordings, body cam recordings. So does that answer your question, Alder?
Yeah, so that is not provision, it's included, and, and they can, that can be provided to the person who is requesting the open request files, right? They can have access to those.
Correct. Of course, in some cases, there are pieces of, you know, body cam video that might have to be redacted, but you're right, otherwise, the, those records can be provided. There's no change because of this ordinance.
Okay, and as a follow-up, could you share with us the timeline when the staff request or the outside member of the community request or the media? Will the timeline be the same, or it depends on the deducting and all that? I'm just curious as to what will be the timeline?
A timeline to fill a request?
Yes, to request and to, to monitor online. That, there's, what I like about this new ordinance is there's real time monitoring the timeline of where the quest or the process is, correct?
I'm going to look for that provision, but, you know, under the state statute, there is not a firm timeline for when a public records request has to be fulfilled. The Department of Justice says for most standard, non-complicated requests, that they, their expectation is that 10 days should be enough, but, but there's a lot of factors that go into that. It depends on how complicated the request is, whether there has to be any clarification, how long it takes to locate, and how long it takes to do any redactions. And so, you know, a lot of people say, I expect to receive these records within 10 days. That's not actually a firm rule in the statutes. Was there the other part of your question, Alder?
I think that's, that's, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Alder. Any other questions? I don't see other Alders in the queue, but I do have a question. I think we, I just want to take the opportunity, since we are reviewing this ordinance, to have, to ask a question about how, what is the policy on texting for Alders? So Sarah, if Director Edgerton can just come to the front and, and give us a little quick overview of that, I would appreciate it.
There we go. I should know, I'm in technology. Okay, so for this one, Alder Figaro Cole, it's not necessarily that it's just for Alders, it's just for everybody that works in the city, right? Okay, so text messaging is a way to reach out, right? It's a way to say, hey, can we talk on the phone? Can we, you know, have a video call? However you want to do it. And then from there, when you are finished and you're doing any kind of official city business, that's where you go to email, because email is our official city record. But if you are doing anything in text messaging that is considered official city business, we're going to give you a tip sheet of how we would like you to do it, because what we would really like you to do is to capture that text message and get it into the city email system so that we are able to tag it, make sure we have it, and make sure that it's there for the records, and so that when you, especially for council, because you all are your own custodians, it's easier for you to find them. So that's why we want you to move all of your text messages, especially into your email, because you are your custodians, rather than, you know, each agency has their own custodian that does this work. For you, it's more important that you have them in your email. Any other questions on that?
Actually, that was, that was pretty clear. I do, Alder Tischler has a question, so I'll. Yep, he's on the Zoom.
Yeah, I'm on the disembodied voice behind you. Does this also, as soon as this also refers to Microsoft Teams chats, you, same, same procedure, just to?
Yes.
Use that a way to reach out, and then we jump, go to email right away? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's exactly right, Alder Tischler. And in fact, I do that quite a bit. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions for Sarah on this regard? So again, again, just for clarification, the ordinance is not endorsing to use your phone to communicate with constituents or things on the agenda, but if you're going to do that, you do have to move it into the, into the system, which is your email. Just wanted to get that. We had some discussions about that recently, and I just wanted for everybody to be on the same page. Thank you. That's all I got.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so going back to this item, are there any other questions for Attorney Haas or anyone on regards to Legislaw? Legislaw 86606? I don't see any hands raised, so is there, we have a motion and a second, is there a objection or recording a unanimous vote in favor of these changes of the substitute? I don't see any objections, so we would recommend to cancel approval for this. And then move us to Legislaw 87044, amending or repealing various sections in Chapter 8, 10, and 33 of the Madison General Ordinances related to reorganizing of city boards, commissions, and committees. Can I get a second? There you go. Dina. Okay, so for this item, this is the item that we have discussed on CCEC multiple times over the past year. We have staff in the room if anyone has any questions or anything to follow up on that, or I leave it up to the body if you, if you have any additional information that you may need. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we go into this, at our last meeting, I, I believe it was the chair, but I don't know who said it, that there would be research done from other municipalities, or am I too early for that? Or is that later on in the agenda? We were specifically talking about the staggered term, so is, will this rest in there, or am I too early for that? Will it be later in the agenda? I was trying to search for it in the agenda.
Sure. Attorney Haas has some information on that that he can share?
Okay, okay, that was my, my, my question. So do we do this item by item? Or how should we? I'm trying to determine, when, when do I come in with my question?
So I guess you have one question up on the, on the table. Can we address that first question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Haas?
Thanks, Alder. I reached out to Fitchburg and Middleton, where the cities that we are aware had one year terms for Alders to serve on committees. I did talk to the Fitchburg City Attorney, who said that, you know, they've had that system for quite a while, and it did not seem to cause any problems or any specific concerns. I think it, the impression I got was it's just been built into their routine, and that, and that the council's been fine with that. I have not heard back from, from Middleton yet, so unfortunately, I don't have anything to report from there. I'm, I would guess that they would maybe have a similar response, but that's what I learned from Fitchburg. It's, it's sort of been baked into their system, and that's what people are used to at this point.
Thank you, Attorney Haas. And Alder Harrington McKinney, actually, that, that resolution is a different one. We're just discussing the BCCs today, not the, not the appointments of the, not the appointments of the committees. Well, you got, we got it, we got it. So if you have questions today about the, the BCCs reorganization, and we have staff in the room to answer some of those questions.
Okay, then, Madam Chair, do I still have the floor?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay. I, I have a question related to the combination or the consolidation of how many committees? The new committee is the Community Resources Committee. Am I in order now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, and so it is, it is consolidating the Commission on Aging, Early Childhood Education, and the Community Services Committee. And I have question related to that, and so I, I, my question is, is that the importance of, these are three very different committees, and when you're lumping in the Commission on Aging and Early Childhood Education, which both are very critical at this time, and with Community Services, could someone give me the background of why these were lumped in together? That's my first question, then I'll follow up with my next question after someone responds to that combination.
Thank you. Christine, I don't, what is, what is she saying? Go ahead.
Okay, Kristi Baumell in the mayor's office, one of the staffers on this project. There were a number of, of factors that led us to propose this, and, and there are other staff here from CDD who, who are welcome to amend or add to my answer as they see fit. One of the things we really noticed here was that we have, A, a lot of overlap in the topics they cover, and I've, and I think there's an argument to make for why it's actually not good for particular age groups to be segregated off from conversations happening in other committees that affect them quite a lot. And so I'll say that in a little more example, a little more detail, and staff can elaborate if they'd like. We have a Community Services Committee that talks about a lot of issues that happen in the Community Resources Division that span all age groups. For example, funding and work we do with neighborhood centers, issues related to workforce, issues related to, oh, I'm going to get the wording wrong, and Yolanda might be here. I want to say, like, it's not abuse, it's crisis intervention, and I'm forgetting. And prevention. And we have, these are issues that affect the aging community, they're issues that affect early childhood. For example, if, if you were to talk about abuse, elder abuse is certainly something that happens in our community. If you were to talk about mental health issues, those are certain, those certainly affect the spectrum of age groups. If you were to talk about workforce issues, workforce is one of the biggest issues we have in our childcare system. And likewise, older adults can face workforce discrimination. When you talk about neighborhood centers and their programming, that affects the entire age spectrum. And yet, we have an Early Childhood Committee and an Older Adult Committee who essentially are having conversations in other forums where these, where these conversations are happening in Community Services. They're essentially segregated off from these important topics that are pretty central to the issues they face. And we think that a committee that looked at these issues in a more multi-generational forum would actually be a benefit. That is the strongest reason. There are, there are other reasons, I think, that support that in terms of the, the work of the Aging and Early Childhood Committees has changed over time. For example, they both give out funding awards. Once upon a time, those funding awards were annual, and now they come up every handful of years. And so that is not an annual body of work. It is a much less frequent body of work. In Early Childhood, for example, there is envisioned this role of handling appeals. In over five years, there hasn't been an appeal. And so the, the work essentially has, has, is, is changing in those committees, where having strong, robust monthly meeting agendas is, is, is frankly not what they see today. It's a little less frequent than that, and we believe there's capacity to manage that workload in a singular committee that not only allows them the focus on these particular age groups, like we have now, but also brings them in to a lot of other topics that are extremely relevant to their lives and that they're, they're not particularly focused on in the moment. And if staff would like to add anything to that, please do. I guess I would add also, I'll just keep talking. I think another benefit to the, I believe there's a worry that this would mean a lost focus, and it's not something we envision. Right now, you have, you have one division, Community Development Division, that segregates, that spreads its time staffing many committees. And that means they have to think about how much time they can spend building and supporting agendas and work items for each of their many committees. If they take some of the time spent on those administrative details of organizing and running meetings, that, that can all be focused into more, like stronger and more robust agendas. And, and, and the result of that is a committee members that feel more engaged and more valued, and, and, and that, of course, we hope in turn, turns into more robust input and, and kind of a stronger relationship overall. So we really do feel that this is, the outcome of this will be really positive.
So a follow-up question is, is that, this is exactly why this is very important, and where you got me is, is that the, the administrative details, and so preparing for three or four boards, committees, or commissions is, is very tiring and taxing, and I, I get that. I absolutely agree with you on that. Where my problem is, is that this is a project that we should have been working, and, and, and correct me, you could, because you might have been working on it for an extended period of time, but what I'm just hearing in the last couple of months is, is that now we're moving toward looking at boards, committees, and commissions, and I know that your team, your staff have been visiting the various boards, commissions, and committees, and asking them the questions, but this is very robust, is very critical, and the fact that we have so many boards, committees, and commissions, I would have wished that we really focused on that, rather than having these decisions made in the, in the next, the next week or the, or the same day. There's just, and, and I guess my question is, is that when you visited these, the various, let's specifically talk about the, the Commission on Aging, because, I mean, that's because, I mean, that's a, that's a wheelhouse I sit in. And also, I'm an educator, so I sit in that wheelhouse too. What were the comments that came about when you were entered, when you introduced the, the combination of Commission on Aging, the Early Childhood, and Community Services? What was the combination, what was the conversation within that? I'm not looking at outside of that body, but what was the conversations that you heard when you met with those three entities?
Sure, I'm happy to talk to that. So we sent a memo to each of the committees in December with not only the background on the project, the recommendations we were making for each of the committees they sit on, and why, and that, and a notice that we would be coming to their meetings in January to ask them for their input on a specific question set. So that was information, and we included that question set in the memo. So that was information they received in December. We then went, I guess, just in chronological order of how we went to these committees. We were first at the Early Childhood Care and Education Committee. They did share some concern that, they were worried that the role and the focus on early childhood could be lost if in a larger committee. They shared that they, as members, had some expertise, and they were worried that that expertise may be lost in a different committee. They feel that this should be more of a focus on just early childhood care and early childhood issues in general, which, and, and they did express that they wished there was more time to consider this. Community Services Committee, there were a couple of questions about whether the merger would diminish focus on older adults and early childhood. They, they wanted to make sure that that wasn't the case. And we shared as staff that we, we believe that won't be the case. We were intending to develop work plans and programs that would make sure that wasn't the case. There were also comments about how, one person commented that they felt the Committee on Aging Meetings were kind of less, less frequent, and that bringing that Committee on Aging group and members to this Community Services Committee could make it a more robust discussion, a more frequent discussion, and that that would be a good thing for them to be engaged in. There was support for multi-generational conversations, and that that could make the work richer overall. And there was input that no matter what we need, no matter how these merge, we need to maintain a strong public voice in these conversations around these issues. Committee input on funding proposals should remain very important, and that there should be a balance of members with specific expertise and general resident members. And there was a suggestion also about thinking about ways we can make sure the committee work engages and is well-connected with the community, such as perhaps, like, meeting in different locations in the community. On the Committee on Aging, they did not reach quorum, so we were not able to talk with them in January. We did follow up, staff followed up with an email to all members saying, you know, as you saw in a memo in December that we wanted to engage with you on these questions, we did not reach quorum, so we weren't able to discuss it. Please bring your, please feel free to email your questions and/or discussion items. Staff are very interested in hearing from you and talking with you. We did not, we received, the only input we received or reach out was from Alder Viver, who is a member. I don't know if he was specifically reaching out as a member of Committee on Aging. He wanted to talk through a number of these proposals, but that was certainly among them. And he expressed that he wasn't in favor of the merger. He had concerns about it. And that's, that's the extent of what we heard from Committee on Aging.
So you hit on every issue right on target that was in my, my questioning mode. The conversations that you had, that you were developing, are the conversations that really, truly needed to happen. Unfortunately, what I heard was that the memo was sent out in December, and there is one meeting in December, I would imagine, and then a follow-up meeting for January. And I'm assuming that there was one meeting in January. And, and now we're in February. And so the opportunity for a full discussion, not only at the committee level and the committee members that were in these various committees, but opening it up to the broader community, bringing that discussion. And so I, I truly support the work that's going into it. I'm really excited about that. But where I have the problem is, is that from December to January, and now we're in February, and we're ready to make a vote. That's where my, my concern is, is that you're developing this model, and it's excellent. I really like what I heard from you. You were just right on target with everything. Where my concern is, is that a memo went out in December, a follow-up member in January, and now we're in February, ready to make a decision, and the, and the council is expected to, to make a decision on the whole. And even though we have had ample time to really, I wish that there was something that we would, we've been working on this for a period of time, where we would have the opportunity to really vet it out and touch all the bases that needed to be touched. But I don't have a problem with the content. Excellent, I'm right there with you. I do have a problem with making this decision on such a short term, because I would have the same concerns, or the intentionality would diminish focus when you're talking about. There is some overlapping, I get that. But when you're looking at children, seniors, there, I would have a question is, you know, if there would be diminished focus. And I would need to know, what's the strategy to assure me and give me the comfort level that there will not be diminished focus? And so that's, that's, thank you for allowing me to kind of ramble, because that is absolutely where my mind is. Because I used to serve on the Commission on Aging, and more and more, I'm hearing from seniors who are felt left out of the equation and uninformed. So that's just kind of my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govindarajan?
Thank you. Would now be a proper time to move an amendment?
Yes.
I would like to move an amendment that is on Legislar. It's called the Govindarajan Amendment. I did not name it. But to speak to the amendment, if that's okay. This is actually Alder Viver's idea, which is the irony of it all. But it delays, oh, sorry.
Can we please make a motion first to get that on the, so you put in a motion, and we need a second? Okay, now we can proceed with discussion. Thank you.
Appreciate it. This amendment was actually Alder Viver's idea, which is why I find the name very ironic. But the amendment basically delays the dissolution of the Downtown Coordinating Committee until next year, April of 2026, specifically the third Tuesday of April 2026, which is when the next session of common council will begin. Alder Viver and several members of the committee strongly believe that they have a couple more things to finish up, and one year will provide them the time to do so. And as I'm a member of that committee and also executive committee here, I was asked to move this forward as a courtesy. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any questions on the amendment? Alder Harrington McKinney?
Not, not questions, but we can take what was just presented us, and that kind of covers my concern about rushing through this. We're at the end, this is now February, and we have March, and then April, and, and we will have conceivably a totally different bodies in the seat. And so to make this decision now, even with the Downtown Coordinating Committee, even with the three that I highlighted, you know, I didn't even get to the Downtown Coordinating Committee. I really focus on the one that was right before us. And I think that we are going in the right direction, but we have not vetted it appropriately to make sure that all of the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, and there is a full, robust discussion so that we can land on something that, it might not be everything that we want, but at least we've had the opportunity to vet it out, to really, to look at it over the long term of, of, of the longevity of life. Because once these decisions are made, you know, they're pretty much solidified. So I, I agree with the, the amendment in terms of delaying or moving this out, not for our discussion now, because I don't think that we have done it due diligence. We have a lot of boards, committees, and commissions, and yes, there's a need for consolidation. And yes, we do understand the amount of time that staff prepares for these, but I don't think that we are ready. And if we're going to do this, let's do it right so that when we, when we have a final document, we have had all of the people that are concerned with it, we vetted it, and we can make a determination that it, that works best not only for the city, but for the, the individuals that are impacted. So I am supporting that amendment, but not just, I want to expand it, not just for the Downtown Coordinating Committee. I am, I want to revise that and make that the revision, the amendment for, for, for what's before us in terms of consolidation. And I understand the work that has already been done on it, but we've just, we've just scratched the surface, and we need time. There needs to be time. I'm not saying we need time, but there really does need to be more time and concerted effort in making these determinations.
So Alder Harrington McKinney, I'm unclear. Are you making a change to the amendment? Are you making an amendment to the amendment?
So could we ask Alder to repeat the amendment from Downtown Coordinating Council? Is that permissible?
Yes. Alder?
Thank you. The amendment here would extend the Downtown Coordinating Committee to be dissolved one year from, from now, basically, April of 2026.
Thank you. Alder Harrington McKinney, what is your, what is the amendment to that amendment?
Okay, I would like to extend, I would also like to add, not only the Downtown Coordinating Committee, I would like to extend the consolidation of the Commission on Aging, the Early Childhood Education Committee Services Committee, and the formation of the New Committee Resource Committee. And I would like to have that extended. And Madam Chair, I don't have the dates. I'm not as efficient as Alder Viver was. Do I need to have the dates in this?
So you can, I guess, the same data as MGRIUs would be appropriate, I guess?
Would that be appropriate? So that's, that's my, that's my, my amendment.
Okay, so we need a second for that amendment? Wait, I'm sorry, one second. Already, so since this is two separate bodies of work, one is served by different staff agencies, we will take the amendment separately. So at this moment, we need a second for Alder Harrington McKinney amendments to extend the, the committee. The committee changes on, to April 26, I think it was, of 2026.
Okay, Madam Chair, please allow me to probably be out of order. The extension for the one year was for the Downtown.
Correct.
Coordinating Council. I do not think that it would take a year for the discussion with the ones that I'm specifically addressing. Let's go back to the one that I'm specifically addressing. I'm addressing the Commission on Aging, Early Childhood Education, and Community Services. And so I'm not asking for a year.
Okay, so what, we just need a date then, for that, for yours then?
Okay, I'm asking for an extension. What is, like, this is April, May, June, July, August, September, at least, at least five months for them to have this discussion. And if they finish it, can it be open-ended? If they finish that discussion and make a determination before the end of the five months, how do I, help me to put it into place? Because what I want to have them do is to have more time to have the discussion, and so that they could be able to institute this at the end of a specific time. I don't think that it'll take a year for these three agencies or commissions to formalize something. I think that they will be able to formalize what they would need to do in the next five to six months.
So is the amendment to terminate the committee in five months? Or to make a decision about terminating the committee in five months?
Make a, make a decision for terminating, making that. I just want them to have time to have a full discussion about what this means with the suggested combination of the three agencies into the new Community Resources Committee. And I want them to give time for that discussion.
Okay, so we need a motion for, for the amendment, Alder Harrington McKinney's amendment, to delay the discussion of the grouping of the Community Service Committee for five months?
Yes.
Is there a second on that? We need a second. Okay, Alder, I'm not seeing a second for the motion at this moment. So then with that, I'm going to go back to the motion on the table, which was extending the, where did he go? The Govindarajan Amendment to extend the end date of the Downtown Coordinating Committee to February 2026, I mean, April 2026. We have a motion and a second on that. And I'm going to ask again, is there any discussion on this item? Yeah, I don't see any hands, but I do have a question. Well, there's a question. Okay, Alder Harrington McKinney?
I don't know if this discussion, but I find it very interesting is that we can extend the Downtown Coordinating Committee.
Alder Harrington McKinney, we're not, we haven't voted yet, so we don't know if that's going to hap, if that's going to pass, so. Um, okay, so anyhow, I have, I do have a question about the extension of this committee and and I'm just also making, gonna take the privilege to have a comment. Um, this is my fourth year in council and since my first year, I have been working on this particular project. We have been, I have been a member of the T-FAX team. We moved this um a few, maybe two, three years later into the um CCC um committee. Um and this past year, we had really focused on on having this discussion. So there there's no secret, we have talked about this for a long time. So it's not like it's news for anybody. So my question for the Alder officials to answer, um I see Alder Revere is also here. It's what is the, what projects are we talking about that need to be completed by by April? I I see on, I see on one of the CD pages that there is a project for the pedestrian mall, I think it is, the Mifflin and Carroll Plaza redesign, and that is scheduled to be completed at the end of this year. So why are we expanding this to April of the following year, one? And two, what other projects are they are there to be completed? So if someone can explain that to me, I would really appreciate it. And Alder Revere, you're on the queue, thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam President. The, to answer your your question, and I appreciate the question very much, the two, the two projects that Alder Gavindarajan was referring to, are you are correct, number one, first and foremost, the redesign of the public right of way, the plazas at the top of State Street in anticipation of both the Wisconsin History Center and the Wisconsin, a new Wisconsin Veterans Museum there at West Mifflin Street and North Carroll Street, respectively. There are a series of public meetings scheduled through the balance of this year with design and and development into the next year uh as it relates to that very important redesign of the public spaces at the top of State Street, the most, I would argue, most visible and prominent intersection in the whole state of Wisconsin. The second project is the um State Street Pedestrian Mall. The council will be seeing sooner rather than later a detailed report analyzing the State Street Pedestrian Mall experiment that was conducted last summer. Uh that will include recommendations from the downtown coordinating committee. Implementation of those recommendations, however, are not scheduled. And the committee would like to have the opportunity to continue discussing implementation of some of the specific recommendations, perhaps in a piecemeal or baby step approach. To give you one example that the mayor uh shared with me, which I think is is a very timely and and appropriate as it relates to this conversation is, in the wake of the tragic terrorist attack in the French Quarter, New Orleans on New Year's Eve, she thought that it was quite possible that the Federal Department of Homeland Security might offer grants for security improvements like ballards, ballards uh that would fit nicely into the recommendation, the draft recommendations, the draft report that the council will be seeing sometime in the next few months as it relates to the analysis of the midstate street, uh excuse me, not midstate street, the state street pedestrian mall. So those are the two, those are the two projects, President Figueroa called, are the are the uh top of State Street redesign and the State Street Pedestrian Mall.
So again, I don't understand like wh- why is the date arbitrarily picked from to be so far a whole year?
Oh, okay, yeah, thank you for reminding me of the second part of your question. So that simply is to make life easier for the mayor, the mayor's office, namely Lila de Costa, the current members of the committee that are alders. The the current committee, by the way, the current ordinance that you have before you in this meeting allows for there to be, it's a unique ordinance construction allows for either two or three alders to serve on the committee. So the assumption is that um this would fit nicely in with, and and I've certainly discussed this with the mayor and with city staff and with the entire members of the downtown coordinating committee at our last meeting, that that sunset date of, as Alder Gavindarajan explained in his description of the amendment, uh would simply be at the beginning of the next council session when when normally a wide variety of BCC appointments are are uh up for renewal, certainly the council members, but beyond the common council, a lot of resident member committee appointments are up in April of each year, just just the way the cycle goes. So it just made sense to me and others that that would be a natural end date, notwithstanding the discussion you just had with Alder McKinney about, you know, perhaps delaying implementation of all this for several months. This was, again, a standalone idea to sunset this at, again, when the next council, as Alder Gavindarajan stated, when the next council is is seated. So there would be no more appointments of alders or any other members of the committee um effective uh in April of twenty twenty six if the amendment is adopted.
Thank you, Alder Revere.
You're welcome. Thanks for the question again.
Are there any other questions um from the body on this regard, on this, on on the amendment? Okay.
Oops.
Um Alder Herentum McKinney.
Um, yeah, I probably am out of order. Since the um the consolidation of Commission on Aging, Early Childhood Education and uh Community Services, uh that did not pass for lack of a second. Uh will I be out of order if um I ask Alder Revere to speak to that, or am I out of order? Because he serves on that committee as well.
I mean, we're talking about the whole thing.
I want to ask him a question, but I want to be in order when I ask it.
So we gotta finish um the amendment first to then go to the main motion, which is about all the BCCs, and then we can, we can talk about the the community on aging. Does that make sense?
That makes sense, and come back. Thank you, Madam.
Okay, thank you. Okay, already, so I don't see any other, any other hands on the queue. I guess it's the time for the vote. Um, it's. Okay, so is there any objection of recording or unanimous vote on this? I don't see any hands, but if you have to mark my vote on this, just put it on for that, please. Thank you. Okay, now we're going back to the main motion, which is um the entire package of BCCs with the amendment of extending um the downtown committee to April twenty twenty six. And we already have a motion and a second for that. And Alder Herentum McKinney, you have questions?
Is Alder Revere still on the queue in the queue, uh still on?
Yeah, he is here, so if he chooses to speak about that, that's his right.
Okay. Alder Revere, uh may I ask you a question?
Yes, Alder McKinney.
Okay, thank you. Um you said on the Commission on Aging, and my question is, with the uh extension of the downtown coordinating committee uh that was just passed, um what it, what was the discussion related to um the consolidation of the Commission on Aging, Early Childhood Education and Community Services Committee into the new Committee Resources Committee?
Yeah, so, well, you'll be happy to hear, I won't speak at length on this because I'm walking into a five thirty Neighborhood Association meeting now. Uh that's the fire engine you might hear in the background uh here at Central Library. But anyway, the the um, to answer your question, as Deputy Mayor Baumel correctly stated, I am not excited about the consolidation for, um I'm sure most of you are not aware, but I have served on the Committee on Aging and its predecessor committee, it's for thirty straight years now. So I have a lot invested in this and we definitely have been much more effective than we have in the last uh, I'd say since since the pandemic, to be sure. The committee formally was much more active than it has been more recently. Uh with that said, I I, as of tonight, do not plan to offer an amendment as it relates to the Committee on Aging. I do think that there are very good arguments as a, as a deputy mayor put forth and Community Development Division staff have put forth, at least to me privately, uh why consolidation makes sense. And at this point, my thought is to give it a shot and see how it works, because I have, representations have been promised to me that that this, although um uh on the surface uh might seem to be uh diminishing the importance of older adults in our community at the time when that demographic is increasing, to be sure, just as it is nationally, uh that this will not diminish the importance of older adults, older adult services in CDD and and all and all of um the city structure. Uh I do want to just take a moment of privilege, though, when uh you heard from the deputy mayor that there was no quorum at our last meeting, I do want to kind of defend the integrity of those of us that currently serve on the committee and state that unfortunately, we currently have four vacancies on the committee. I think the mayor has chosen to not appoint members of the committee as uh she well knew that this was a consolidation, was under considerate, active consideration. So we have an unprecedented high number of vacancies on the Committee on Aging, four currently. And in addition, one of the members, a former alder, Eve Galanter, recently joined the committee not that many months ago. And unfortunately, her old email address uh was used for the committee notices, so she didn't, wasn't aware of the committee meeting where we didn't have quorum. Aside from uh the last meeting, we traditionally, historically, just so everyone knows, have not had a difficulty achieving quorum at the Committee on Aging. I don't find that it's a committee that whose members do not value the importance of the work, the importance of the mission, and uh that we're a committee in in search of of what our place is. Uh we just went through, as you all know, a very um somewhat controversial but a very critical funding process, this funding cycle uh for older adult services. And so um, you know, that work is behind us and as the deputy mayor articulated, um that next funding cycle isn't scheduled for several more years. Uh and that that is the main duty. Lastly, let me say that the other main area that this committee has engaged in, that you know full well, Alder McKinney, from your tenure on the committee in the past, uh is oversight over the Madison Senior Center. And um there were separate committees dealing with the senior center boards, participant committees that have gone by the wayside and been consolidated since the pandemic as well. Um so I do have a concern that the senior center, as you all generously just adopted, as it related to the DCC. Thank you for the question.
Okay, and I know that you're going into another meeting, just for what, um meeting. Uh question is, is that um having said all of that and uh 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 are are you still confident that we are at a stage where an extension of the consolidation of the three um committees into the new Committee Resources and and New Committee Resources Committee, um that decision might not be delayed? And I heard you saying you had private conversations, da 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 da. But those private conversations are private conversations. And um 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 and I'm wondering, um, you know, why or how are we o- okay with consolidating those three agents, those three committees into the new Committee Resources Committee without that same uh um um the the same um time element in terms of of making sure that everyone understands the why and there's a better comfort level? I guess I'm struggling with this because I don't understand why the amendment, I heard the amendment or the cause of amendment for the downtown coordinating committee, but I'm still struggling and understanding why that same um uh was not um attributed to the 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 consolidation of the the other two, other three um committee.
Uh Alder Herentum McKinney, um Yolanda is here. Will that help for her to, since she's closer to all three committees, for her to answer some of these questions?
I'll just say to, quickly, if I could, Madam President, to Alder McKinney, I was going to suggest the same thing, that that CDD staff is is with you, I see here in Zoom. Uh and and I think I would refer your question to her. And I would just, though, if I could quickly say, as I walk into my Neighborhood Association meeting, that, and so I'm going to sign off in a minute here from the meeting, uh that uh if we were in the midst of a very active project at the Committee on Aging currently, as is the case with the downtown coordinating committee, I would likely have suggested a sunset provision for this as well. But but we just finished our funding um processes, as we've said. And and Yolanda can speak to this much better than I as the manager of that whole older adult services operation, including this Madison Senior Center. But but I can't put my finger on a specific um project that we're in the midst of there as as we were with DCC. So thank you very much, everybody. I have to, I'll see you at the council meeting, thank you.
Thank you, Alder Revere. Um so Alder Herentum McKinney, is it okay for Yolanda to comment?
Uh sure.
Thank you. Um there you are, thank you, Yolanda.
Good evening, everyone, my apologies, um I'm in my car. Um so um Alder McKinney, thank you for your question and your concern. I think one of the important things to note about uh particularly why staff are in favor of the streamlining um process or project is that the Community Services Committee, as it currently exists, um oversees um and provides policy oversight for four of the five areas that we oversee within the Community Resources Unit. So that's school age, child and youth programming. So that's programming for our 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 babies, our elementary, middle and and high school um youth. Uh it provides oversight for employment, so employment for young people ages fourteen to eighteen, young adults eighteen to twenty-six, and adults eighteen and up. We also provide oversight around what we call crisis intervention and prevention. So that is anything supporting agencies that uh serve individuals and families that are impacted by violence, domestic violence, uh homeless and runaway youth services, youth restorative justice, case management, resource service facilitation services, the very broad area that we uh provide support to agencies across a number of different needs. Um we also provide um neighborhood center support. So we fund fifteen neighborhood centers throughout the city of Madison uh that provide support to local neighborhoods and communities, food pantries, programming, um and and essentially supporting the operations of that neighborhood center. The last um piece that is not currently within the Community Services um committee structure is older adult services, which includes the Madison Senior Center. And so for staff, um in terms of alignment, it it makes sense for the work of the Committee on Aging around prioritizing and identifying the needs of older adults to live in what would be the new Community Resources Committee, because it would align with the rest of the work that we are doing within the Community Resources Unit as a whole. When we talk about programming for school age, child and youth, or we talk about employment programming or crisis intervention, we are thinking multi-generational. We're not just thinking about the the child, but we're thinking about those that are supporting the child. When we talk about employment, we know that there are older adults who are working, who want to work. When we talk about crisis intervention and prevention, we know that there is elder abuse. We know that there is case management and resource service facilitation needs for older adults. When we talk about neighborhood centers, we're talking about creating spaces and programming within those neighborhood centers that serve and support our older and aging population. So for us, it's a multi-generational, streamlining approach that we're not just thinking about one population of people, but we're thinking about all populations of people. And so, again, that was really um where the staff came in in terms of thinking that this streamlining um process um made the most sense because it aligns with most of the work, with the rest of the work that we're doing across the Community Resources Unit. Um and to Alder Revere's um uh point, we have engaged the Committee on Aging, we have engaged the Community Services Committee, although the Committee on Aging was not able to- We have engaged the Community Services Committee. Although the Committee on Aging was not able to meet, they have been made aware, um, of this process. Um, they were, uh, offered opportunities to engage in conversation with staff, ask questions, bring concerns. Um, we've not received anything, um, from any of the committees, either committee. Um, and that's not to say that there are not still questions or concerns, but I just want to be clear in terms of communication and outreach to, to our committee members to make sure that they're aware and informed of this process and what that is going to mean, um, for them. We, we have been pretty clear about what that's going to look like and have provided space for folks to, to, to provide input and, and questions if they have it.
And so one follow-up, I, I appreciate, uh, your explanation and I, I get eventually how all of this is going to sync together, uh, but I am still, um, uh, somewhat concerned with the fact that, um, this was introduced in December and the, um, uh, in January, now we're in February. And of all of the things that you have explained to me, uh, this information was given to the Committee on Aging and the early how, early childhood education and the Community Services Committee, uh, consolidated or just individually to those committees? When would that, when did that conversation happen? Or was it in the form of memos that were sent out? Was there a, a dialogue, a conversation about the whys, as you explained to us just now?
Yes. Uh, yes. So the memo was sent out to all committees, um, in December, shortly before the holidays. Uh, the Community Services Committee was able to meet at their January meeting. And so council staff and, um, mayoral staff attended that meeting, provided a, um, overview of the streamlining project and was available to answer questions at that time. The Committee on Aging unfortunately did not have quorum, um, so they were not able to meet at their January meeting. And so what we did was follow up, um, with an email further explaining, um, the process, um, and also provided, um, information in terms of if they had questions or concerns, who to contact, being, um, CDD staff as well as mayoral and common council staff. Um, neither one of the meeting, neither one of the committees had action items that required them to meet for the month of February. And so in that communication to them, I also, uh, provided an update on where we are at in the streamlining process in terms of next steps, that it was going to be coming to this body this evening and then going to common council, uh, March 11th, uh, for final consideration. So in terms of communication, we've been very clear with committee, committee members on where we're at in the process and the next steps, who they can contact if they have questions or concerns. Um, I do also want to just say that while I, I, and I recognize that, uh, Alder Revere has served on the Committee on Aging for a long time and appreciate his longstanding service on that committee. Um, if I can be honest, in the last three years that I have, um, oversaw that committee, the quorum has been an issue. Um, they have, they have not met more than they have met. Um, and so there, there might be a number of factors that play into that, um, in terms of the time of day of the meeting, um, or just, you know, other things that are, uh, impacting folks' ability to, to show up to the meeting space. Um, but that has been an issue. Um, and another thing I think is important to note is beyond the funding process, there are no other, uh, priorities or action items, if you will, for the committee to, to come together to have discussions, to meet and take action on. And so, you know, looking at a glance for 2025, now that the funding process is over, there, there is nothing that we have set in place to bring them together for them to meet specifically as, as just the Committee on Aging. I mean, yes, there are certainly things that they could probably come together to just have discussion about. But when you think about the issue of being able to, to meet quorum and knowing that that has been a longstanding issue, at least for the last three years. I can't speak prior to that because I wasn't, um, the one who oversaw that committee. Um, but since it has been under my leadership, it has been a challenge. And so I think that was another thing that we factored, um, had to take into consideration as we thought about this streamlining process is how do we, um, address that? How do we also make the best time and, and, and use of people's time and not just bring people together to bring people together, but bring them together when they actually have things to take action, to do work, to provide input on it. And, and for the Committee on Aging, because they've just finished a very large funding process, the next funding process is not going to be for another four years. And so, um, it may be more advantageous for older adult representation, those who are, uh, lived experience or are serving and supporting the older adult population to be in the Community Resources Committee because we have other funding processes coming up. Crisis Intervention and Prevention, for instance. That's a really big funding process. But that, again, is not just about serving young people and adults ages 18 to 45. That also includes our older adult population. So bringing them into that Community Resources Committee space would allow us to, to also focus on our aging and older adult population in that funding process as well as, as we prepare for the next funding process, which will be in 2026, which will be appointed. So we have more funding, uh, processes and pri- priorities within our Community Services Committee current structure and then eventually the Community Resources Committee, where I think the older adult and aging, um, population and the needs of those populations will still be centered and, and, and prioritized in, in that meeting space. Does that, that help?
Um, it helps tremendously, uh, so very much. And I must, I, I, I must have.
Alder Harington McKinney, there is a, a background noise.
Okay, there's no one in the office but me, so I don't know where the background noise. Uh, thank you, uh, Yolanda, um, for your explanation. And I must apologize to you because I did not do a one-on-one with you, uh, to get the full ex, um, the, 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 the full, nor, nor did I do a one-on-one with Christie, nor did I do a one-on-one with you to get the fullness of this excellent explanation. And so, um, it ended up at the executive committee and I could have done a better job now hearing all of the pieces of, uh, being more comfortable with this, uh, with your explanation than I was when we first went into that. So I want to really thank you for really expla- explaining and expounding on the, the details. And so, Madam Chair, I'm complete.
Thank you, Alder Harington McKinney, and thank you, Yolanda. Um, so we are going to then proceed with a vote on this amended, um, legislative version. Um, and unless I see a hand raised, is it okay to, to take a unanimous consent on this, um, this vote consensus? I don't see any hands against it, so that motion passes. It is now, um, 11 minutes to six and IT is getting a little bit anxious. So I know we have the second item on the agenda, which is, um, the resolution to continue the discussions. But I, I mean, I don't know if I, I'm going to give it a stab to try to put it through in 10 minutes, but we gotta leave the room at 6 o'clock. So let's just move on real quick with the knowledge that we have to, we have to, um, stop, um, the meeting. So the item, the next item on the agenda, and that, that was a unanimous consent. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is Legislaw 87066, directing city staff to explore and/or pursue specified changes to the City of Madison Board Committee and Commission system. Um, is there a motion, please? A second? NGR. Okay, do you have, do we, this again, this is something that we have been discussing for a while. We had, have multiple presentations. Are there any additional questions for staff on this regard? This one is just directing staff to complete, um, to look into additional, additional, um, configurations. I don't see any hands raised, so I have no questions. I have a motion on the floor. Is there an, any issue recording a unanimous vote, um, for adoption for this item? And I don't see any hands raised either. So with that said, um, Karen, do you, can you do your, your updates in five, in three minutes? Three minutes? Three minutes?
You know me.
Okay, three minutes. And we're going to go and skip to Legislaw item 86717, which is, uh, which is the council's office update. Thank you.
Oh, my goodness. I think the big thing I want to highlight for you, and I will send this out. I apologize if, if I didn't get out before the meeting. Um, let me see. Okay, great. The big thing I want to highlight for you is the Aspire internship postings are now live throughout, for the whole city, including ours. So please, please go ahead and spread the word. Um, I have a quick little reminder as we realize that, as folks are talking about this, that in fact, we've got only two more meetings of the current council after tonight. So if you have something you want to get on the agenda, um, on the 311 agenda, um, that's, it's got to be everything all wrapped up nicely and through the process um, by noon on Wednesday, uh, March 5th. So I wanted to draw your attention to that. Um, yeah. And then we just have the updates and, and I'm working on Alder onboarding. This has been, this is, this is going to be the thing I'm going to try to be focused on for the rest of this, you know, the next six weeks. And, um, I did want to give you one flag. We are, due to the, um, some technological reasons, um, we're, we need to have the council leadership elections in person with a paper ballot. We just, the president and I discussed it. So I'm just going to flag for everyone who is coming back that, um, if you could be prepared to be in person for that part, portion of the April 15th meeting, um, paper ballot is preferred for a number of, of reasons. Uh, that, that'll be done. Oh, looks like someone has a question.
Alder, Alder Gavindarajan. Okay, thank you. Um, is that it?
Um, it just the future, whatever's left.
Yeah, so there's some IT concerns regarding the new system for new alder. So we are pretty much trying to make it easier with the revering back to paper for, for this one. Uh, with that said, um. There's, well, we're not going to do that. We're just going to adjourn.
Are you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So with that said, to give the room back to IT, a motion to adjourn? Thank you. Second, we are, um, is there any, any, um, issue recording a unanimous vote in adjournment? I don't see any hands raised. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.